But now. Tim, can you hear? Okay?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm gonna crank you up though, because I'm using this loaned laptop from the county and it's just. Maybe if I don't use the Samsung but use this. Is that better?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. I think it's any, any louder, but. Because the TV, the TV speakers aren't loud enough. Say something again, Tim.
Is it louder now?
But it's about the same.
About the same?
Yeah, I think when I bring my other laptop back, it'll be better. This one just doesn't have that great of speakers on it.
Yeah, it was pretty quiet last meeting, too.
At the last meeting?
Yeah.
I'll just note that that laptop speaker's not the greatest, so. Everybody's just gotta like elevate their voice tonight.
There's no way to get it out of the TV speakers?
I have it out of the TV speakers we're on and it is not loud enough. So it's doing the best we can with what we have. When, next month, I'll have my, my laptop that's at home back here and that will make a big difference. The system on that is much better than the smaller one I got from the county.
Okay, six flat. We'll call meeting order. Just being in time to roll.
Yep.
With dispense with the fledgeable agents unless there's some on the. Uh, that would move on to approval of this evening's agenda. All through this evening's agenda. So second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. None motion carries. Uh, the whole business. Our PR report.
Can we talk with the PR, Tim, or do you want to? I can't hear you.
Sorry, I had it on mute. Uh, I'll have you start. You visited with Larry some on this, right, Caleb?
This morning.
Okay.
So, um, we've been working with Mike to get water testing done at the Wolf of Treatment Plant and then I wanted to. Get raw water samples to us and kind of compare and just see how well the treatment plant is working. So we were actually able to get those. Uh, two weeks ago now, we've got some sampling done and then we got those results in the last week. So now kind of our next step with that are to take those results and then. Talk to a bunch of different suppliers and see what the recommendations are for upgrades where we could potentially have improvements on the treatment side. Basically, the water here, you know, is higher iron and there's some manganese, but the main thing that. Uh, is being treated is iron and the treatment plant does do a very good job of that. It brings it down well below the EPA threshold. Um, but there's other contaminants out there that aren't heavily monitored right now, but are predicted to be monitored. More closely by the EPA in the future, so there are things we'd like to look at to. Come over treatments and stuff.
What kind of chemicals were those ordered?
Well, the different standards, like possibly ammonia and stuff like that. Ammonia is typically not something that's treated for. Um, but it is something that is now on pH radar as a potential contaminant.
Those PFAs, too.
Um.
Forever contaminated.
Forever contaminated, so everything's been talking about in studies.
Individual.
All like the arsenic, all those nannies and stuff like that.
Well, isn't it the plastics and stuff like that?
Foam stuff, but you have to remember that this high industry causing a lot of that, you know, with the foam at the Midge Airport and stuff. And as we talked, our well is actually fairly well protected by nature itself, the location of it and the ground material. So we're not at nearly as high a risk as a lot of these other places, especially, you know, places such as. Oh, some of like the Midgie, the bigger cities, Brainerd, stuff like that, that pull from like Mississippi surface waters. Those are a lot more risky when you start talking about that kind of stuff than our well water we have here.
So like when Chris was here talking about the wellhead protection last time, you know, he, he touched on that a lot. We don't really need to worry about it because of how.
Yeah, it's not gonna be a real big one for us.
But that doesn't necessarily mean we shouldn't look at, uh, great to it to potentially future, uh, for the EPA standards.
Yeah, that's kind of a, you know, that's hand in hand, that wellhead protection with. The whole thing that we're doing here, that you kind of coincide with each other. Ours, luckily for us, with where our wells are and everything, you're never gonna see industry right there. You know, they can really affect that, so, yes, to monitor it, I'll always moving forward and stuff.
So yeah, with those water tests, we're, now I'll start putting together like recommendations for the treatment plant. We're hoping to have a draft of the PR within sixty weeks, just depending on how the suppliers get back to us and stuff like that. And then hopefully they'll present that draft and then from there, we'll work on ER to get to finish the PR first and ER comes after that. And once, and all that process works is you send out solicitation letters to all the different affected agencies such as USDA and Fish. Historic buildings, just all these different. Uh, environmental groups and stuff like that, and then they have to comment on your proposed project and see if there's any adverse or negative effects that. Could infect like, affect wetlands and flood zones, stuff like that. And they, there's a response time, so that does take a little bit of time after that. So once the PR is finished, then we start ER, that could be a couple of months, just depending on how fast the agency to get back. But that is where we are at, so we're definitely moving forward now with obtaining the water testing, so that's good.
And you know, with regard to that water testing, we're going to look at, uh, Mike, we've been visiting with Mike on that. We're going to have a couple of different options in there. One is to look at what is it going to take to modify the existing system? But he also would like to take a look at a different system. Um, I think there's been some preference to. Uh, this is kind of a unique technology that the city has and we'd like to look at maybe something that's a little more standardized. So you know, we'll take a look at that and we just need to keep in mind that as these PRs progress here. To get the regulators or the funding agencies to review them, there can be some pretty good time constraints in there on hearing back from them, getting responses and dealing with. Those responses. So we've got several months ahead of us here, but the good news is, is now we've got the information to keep this thing going, so that's good.
Any questions? Read faster?
Um, it is tough to, at the end of it, to make it any faster just because you're waiting on agent and stuff like that, once you start submitting stuff, but.
No, it's, it's all progress, it keeps moving. All new. Does anybody else have a question for it? Thank you. Uh, the co-op, real bad.
For the library person?
Oh, sorry. Twenty twenty-four plans.
Well, I just put that on there because I know at the, um, the two conversation that we. Uh, reported, we, you know, we're done with some of the plans in the exterior building and I know Mike and I have talked about continuing working on. Um, making improvements to the building. We need to start making some solid plans if we're, if we're going to use that capital improvement money for the existing building more. And what we need to do it, so, um, it would be helpful for some feedback from the library board. Because this, you know, obviously we're not gonna switch to a different facility in the short term, because we tried that twice. But if we're going to use that money the way it was appropriated, then we need to start making some serious plans to what it may as well. And what its best uses for.
So we'll have. Or you'll be able to bring us to the board?
I mean, I think, Mike, you and I have had side conversations. We talked about replacing doors, you know, exterior doors. Um, doing some, some different signage on the exterior, there's portion of it, but there's also some improvements that could be made to the interior. Um, and what is the best use of that money?
We really need some sort of direction at this point.
Yeah.
That building hasn't had much for updates in quite some time. I mean, money can be thrown at many different things in there, but we really need to. Come to some sort of decision and some sort of understanding on the footprint of the building. If there's gonna be an addition put on at any time, if there's not, you know, the, the best place to put the money. If there isn't an addition, there is gonna be an addition, well, then that's where the money's going.
Was there room for addition?
We could go to the east. We took that entire deck off of that building. There is room to go to the east. Can't really go to the south. There's not much room there.
Well, that's just to change that property.
Right.
Right.
But there, there is room to move east with it.
Maybe toward the hour.
Correct.
Yeah.
It seems to be quite a room.
Yeah.
I mean, the deck was huge.
There'd need to be some, some landscaping addressed, you know, for the, the slope back there, but that's not that big a deal. And that deck was quite large and after we took that down and there's still, even from what would have been the footprint of the deck, there was still. All thirty feet or forty feet to the alley, something like that. So there's, there's plenty of room that that building can be added on to and go to the east. With very. You know, very minimal reconstruction, I guess I'll call it, you know, the. The air handler for the mini split is back there and something else, but those can be moved pretty easily. It's not hard. Yeah, at some point. Got to kind of get off the body or make a decision, figure out what's going on.
Um, now they're holding out for another building, but.
Oh, that's not gonna happen.
I just don't see that happening.
Nothing really around here that. For them to go into.
I mean, the square footage of the deck added to that building.
Yeah.
Decent.
That was, uh, you know, the deck was. The width of the building and then.
We don't know, we just need to.
We just gotta figure something.
I think we gotta figure something out. But do you want, do you want to give a deadline for this to figure out? Otherwise, you could just end up rolling over and over. Like, you know, having some feedback from the library board by March would, I think, is.
I mean, we're two years into this thing now, aren't we? We can kind of hold.
Maybe by our March work session, March work session.
It kind of seems like they don't ever. Have a big ask or.
Well, I would elude the sun, they're probably waiting on you guys and they're waiting on them. So if everybody's kind of holding out for a building like Lauren said, then.
There's, yeah, there's still. Wanted a new building and, you know, and it's kind of like sitting there, just kind of.
And the reality of it is, yeah.
They don't need it off, you know, they don't. They're supposed to be there.
There's a few other things that I've had through side conversations with some of the board members and things like that, but. And Kelly also, you know. She's in a lot of time and, you know. Little things like turning one, you know, go down to have one restroom and make a family restroom, you shrink, you know.
There's a nice big space.
And we gave that entire, that entire area, and so. And just other side conversations, stuff like that, but yeah, we do need.
Right, priority.
What would they like to see and what are we able to do?
What can we fit into the budget?
Thank you. Now can we talk about co-op?
You can talk both co-op. I can talk both co-op, you bet. Um, so as I've been reporting the last couple of months, we've been waiting on. To be able to convey the property to the co-op, I've been waiting on our city attorney. Um, as most people have figured out since October, there's been a lot of sickness going around and that fit my attorney as well. So not only in his office and himself, but also with his family. So I just got back, uh, connected with him this past week. I have a draft of a purchase agreement. I have let Rachel know that a draft has been done. However, uh, one of the things we were missing in the fall that the attorney was asking the state for was a well disclosure. And they still have been giving it to us and it's not in the quitclaim deed that was survival to us either. So we are going back to the state to get the well disclosure so that, you know, a correct, um. Uh, property identification description can be drafted. I mean, the, once we get all the paperwork done, it's gonna be very easy. We're basically just having two signatures. We don't even need to go through. Um, title or anything like it, that we could get property sale. It's just going from us to the co-op.
Um, are they, they're ready to build there whenever.
I know that Rachel's, uh, board has been patient. Uh, they, I talk with her monthly about, you know, where we're at and. I mean, I, like I said, I told her that the PA has been drafted and, um, she's aware of that. I think they are hoping for a twenty-four build or at least to start ground work this spring, depending on how the, the winter goes. Um, one of the things I also wanted to report to the council was the county house asked if the council will, if the city will be annexing. In that new property to the city and. Farthest from my brain about it because all the rest of the stuff that's been going on, because this new parcel that they're creating is no longer the state parcel. It is now.
Right.
You know, it's technically a, it's technically first a township parcel. So I did tell the county to hold, um, a PID number in a placement until I get the conveyance done. And then I'll work with the attorney to make sure that it's, um, annexed. So that new parcel that was provided in the exhibit with the proclaim deed I provided to you guys, that's where the business will be. On the, I guess, the southeast side of where the, the railroad tracks are. Um, that will become a, an eighty-one parcel and then I'll go into our parking taxes, too. Because where the, where the, um, the green elevator and everything are, the building backs in eighty-one, but the other side isn't. It's technically state property, so.
I gotcha.
Honestly, at first point, I wanted, yeah, when the county even asked me, I was like, boy, you know what? I wondered if the state's even allow it and I went through the, the deed and there's no restrictions on that that I could see. And I've asked for some verification from Joe Lango, too, just to be on the safe side, but yeah, I mean, it's a decent amount of property. It should be annexed into the city. So that will also be a process I'll have to take once the, um, conveyance is done.
Good, yes, this is on the top.
Yeah.
Uh, any other, any questions on that? Move on to the, uh, foundation. We're seeing do that.
Yeah, they're still, they're still kind of trickling in. Um, we got one from, uh, Joelson's around Christmas. Um, Landa Lakes came in with a hundred dollars. Red River came in with a couple hundred dollars since we met last. So, um, I'm still holding pretty true to my, um, thought that anything above and beyond the goal should be utilized for some. Um, the areas shaping around the historic duck and if there's anything that older, we're just gonna keep it off as a, as a restoration fund for future. Or that, that's actually themselves.
Sounds good.
That's clearly what the request of the funds have been paid for and that's what the intention is, so. Name that way.
Yeah, I'd like to bring that up to the chamber to make sure that we're getting that check written out.
Yeah, well, well. Our restoration company's not coming back until probably June, so we're, we're gonna go a little while.
I've got a little time. I don't want to, you know, first year as president, I don't want to screw that up.
No, I'm not worried about that. Yeah, no, good, good comment.
Onto the, uh, performance stage. I haven't heard anything about this. Because I haven't talked about it.
Okay. We're not left to eat up this thing?
No.
And that'll leave it on our business?
Yeah, give me one more chance.
Okay.
Trying to get a hold of everybody.
I mean, the downside to this is if it doesn't go forward, the city's gonna be digging that money back to the Moon family, right?
Well, I've been more of a see where we're holding the funds.
We have the funds.
Oh, yes, that is absolutely good.
Yeah. I mean, I hope it goes through.
Something should. Water tower.
Mike, I left that on the old business because it was brought up last, uh, work session. Is there something more you needed to discuss or bits needed to start coming in or? As to what's in you?
Painting, sorry.
Yeah.
Painting, I can apologize.
Yeah.
Yes, that's completely my fault. I have it down there. Didn't even pass my mind today.
Between now and the beginning of December, we have one meeting, so.
Yeah.
This is our jump back into the world here.
We've got a fair amount of time before the power, we even, we thought about painting right now anyway, so.
Do you think it's a twenty-four project or a future project?
Uh, I can't imagine that we're gonna do it. I don't know where we would fuck that funding from all of a sudden.
Uh, if that's the case, then I'll just leave it off the.
At this time.
I'll leave it off the old business and make sure Mike and I bring it when we do either budgets or other types of public works.
I'll pop it in at some point.
Okay.
So, yes, we have that day, yeah.
That'll be something we'll want to include on the PR, so, that'll be on there.
Well, thanks, Caleb. That's what I was going to say is, do we have a copy of that report by chance yet?
I believe in you. In my office, I have.
Okay.
Do I ever call a party that you said it hasn't been painted since it was built? Is that right?
Yeah.
In two thousand and three.
Yep.
So I would say.
Yeah, and the page is roughly, you know, you talk to any of the guys doing this kind of stuff, it's pretty much a twenty-year lifespan.
Yeah.
So we're, we're right there.
The appearances are important and I know it was looking pretty rough before they cleaned it.
Yeah, and it's, you know, now that it's been cleaned, like we talked, you can really see the spots where the paint is chipping and blackening.
I think if it looks good, it creates good impression about what's inside.
Well. Even, even beyond that, once it, once it starts doing what it's starting to do now, you want to get it taken care of. Before it really has a chance to, you know, eat and actually deteriorate the metal itself, not just the paint.
Yeah, once you get that pitting and they.
Once that starts, it's all downhill from there.
Are they recommending full interior end, exterior?
Uh, I believe so, if I remember. Which again, it's been twenty years, it's random, of course.
Always without it's clean.
Yep, it's, I mean, overall, it looks good, you know, there's no structural stuff going on or anything. It's more or less just the maintenance that needs to be done. The tower itself.
Um, I did have, um, an opportunity to communicate with USDA prior to going out on leave about, um, funding for the city hall updates. Um, I did hear back from, uh, Laura. She was not confident that USDA was the correct, um, path to take for funding. Um, and that was just a quick email, so my next step, I'm going to reach out to Gail Leiberson from Woodset and see what other kinds of. Paths we might be able to take for some funding, one way or another, and hopefully have some back for you guys next month.
What blocks you sell, Scott?
So I wanted to put this back on the agenda because obviously it is now two thousand and twenty-four and we have elections coming up. And we don't want this to get, um, swept under the rug and forgotten about. So we definitely want to start working on drafting a marketing campaign that we can push to our voters this summer. Um. Um, my, my goal is to probably start it on around primary date, so it doesn't get too early, but not too late, since the city doesn't have a primary. And I don't want all the rest of what's going on with the current elections at a national level to get our little letter, voters to forget about it. And then not know anything. Um, yeah, so my hope is to continue working with Tim and Caleb and, um, their marketing team to put something together. That would be mail, maybe even, um, something we can get on our website. And, uh, Tim, I was gonna tell you and Caleb that, uh, Pinnacle Marketing Group is our, is our web host. And they've done a lot of work with, uh, our website the last two years. We do some monthly maintenance with them to do updates and they too would be, um, a really good partner. Um, to maybe get some of this marketing together, if you guys want to help me coordinate that. They've also done YouTube videos for the city through that Lack of Development Corps. To help promote the area and the community and that's on our website, on our YouTube channel. We want to see some of the stuff that they've done for us. I just think that, um, Kyle Waterman and his, uh, team have been really good. So I'm, I'm hoping I can get everybody's input on that. What would be great to, to push that.
Do you have a contact for us, Christina, you can send me?
I absolutely do, yeah.
Thank you.
Be back.
Is it Pinnacle?
Pinnacle Marketing, they're in, uh, the Midgie over there by Paul Runyon.
Okay.
Yes.
Kyle Waterman. Any other talk about the co-op? On to new business.
Uh, the first thing I know for you guys to consider is, um, the Blackberry Kids Exhibition jury has requested a donation. Um, I did invite, um, Kelly Gilson to the meeting tonight. She couldn't make it, so I did at least share with you. Uh, their request for funds, which obviously would get addressed at the February council meeting. Um, it looks like they're looking for anything like some of the scooters and stuff again like last year. So, um, last year I think we spent up to five hundred dollars and bought two bikes.
Two helmets.
And two helmets, yep. So, um, if you want, like, the council wants to see what that ended up being for cost, I can provide that in the packet.
I like this.
Comparison.
I think this is.
Really, yeah. You may recall that we, and we spent it locally, we ordered everything through the one we are and everything went through.
And, uh, everybody was, uh. And everybody was blown away at the last one, so. How many folks showed up?
I have to tell this last week, that was actually where you were. The first Sunday in March. I think that's March, I think it was the third or. I think everybody was there. You weren't.
Lakeview Cemetery before.
Tim, okay, I want you guys to talk, because I'm ready for not reading the whole thing.
Yes.
But I was on the Zoom call, so I have an idea of what we're doing.
So Christina and I did not have a chance to visit before the council meeting, but this is, you know, in response to the proposal the city had received from a Canadian firm looking at assisting with the cemetery, you know, we're looking at things a little bit differently here with the city. You know, we wouldn't manage the cemetery like the Canadian company put together, but what we've put together here for the council to consider is, you know, the couple of things that are really important to the city is, one, let's get that information electronically. And let's see how we can try to make that available to our citizens that we have within the city of Black Duck, and then let's come up with a measure to assist our city staff in locating those plots so that it's a little easier to locate those and a little, take a little bit less guesswork out of this for the staff out in the field that are digging the graves. So what we had put together here, I gotta pull that up here, bear with me a second. There's some different exhibits that you see that are along with this. We have a three-inch diameter monument and a two-inch diameter monument as part of new statutory requirements. There's supposed to be these placed in cemeteries, but you know, we already have an existing cemetery, so we're grandfathered in, so we don't need to necessarily have these by statute. But these are the pieces that would assist Mike and his staff in locating that. We've got the first layout, what we're referring to is section Y in the cemetery plot. This is what statutory requirements are, is they need a monument placed at the corner of every cemetery plot, so you can see with every four, there would be one that would be needed to meet the new statutory requirements. What we did is we said, okay, based on that layout, there would be a certain amount to place those. We said if Mike and his staff could get by with less than that, then here's another alternative. That's the alternate example under section Y. So that was a number that we had put together, but if we go back to the proposal, what we would need and what we would suggest is, you know, with regard to the Canadian company that had provided a proposal, they had given no information on survey accuracy and survey data. So the information that they were going to provide is just strictly going to be based on what's available with GIS, and the accuracy of that is not even close to what we would have for surveys, so the survey base map, what that is, is we would go out there and physically locate the monuments that are in the cemetery, and we would lay the cemetery out so that that is to be incorporated into GIS so that that would assist the city in managing the GIS portion of the cemetery. And that would be twenty-five hundred dollars that we would need to collect that data from the cemetery. And then, once that data is collected, then we would have our GIS folks take that information, create the base map, and then we would take the electronic records that Christina already has, you know, the CAD drawings and the Excel drawings or Excel files. And so we would pull that information in so that that GIS information can be updated and actively put in the map so that, you know, the plots that are still available would be shown as vacant or open. The plots that have already have, you know, deceased folks that are buried there, those would be noted, and then, you know, the ones that have been purchased, that would also be noted. And that's part of the seven thousand nine hundred dollar fee. And then, you know, what we said is, with regard to the optional monument placement, that's something we would like to work with the city and staff on. We just tried to give you an example to show that there's quite an expense in the monuments alone, if you go that way. And, you know, the labor to put that information in the ground so that it's available to staff, so you know, that gets to be quite an expense, but you could try to break that up, because the other exhibit is, I tried to identify in the Lakeview Cemetery plat, you know, we have the areas that have already been pretty well filled at the cemetery. And then there's quite an area that is available yet for burials and for purchase, so. Just kind of try to lay that out, I think, in my opinion, anyway, the next thing to do is just kind of talk about what's the city's desire with monumentation. And then we can go back and refine a number and come back to you with a final proposal if you would like, so. I don't know if that's enough detail, Christina, take questions at this point.
That's a good summary, thank you. So the, my question to you is, the optional placements or optional monuments placement services that are listed on page two and three of the proposal are only for section Y, or are they for everything in the orange?
Yeah, so that's why you can see it gets rather expensive, so that's, you know, where we need to sit down with staff and say, you know, what are your challenges that you're seeing, how much information do you need, and, you know, what's realistic to put that in the ground for you?
Well, to comment on that, I mean, we had Y, X, and W. I don't think you can see, I think you just did those north ones. Surveyed and corner markers put in two years ago.
Northwest.
By Northwestern Survey. We paid them to do that because Bob Senior said, you know, if I get the corner markers, I can measure it out, and I know how, you know, how long everything is, I know how spaced out the graves are going to be and this and that. There's no roads in between those, no paths. This wouldn't take that and make it more banal, we'd be able to know everything in X or Y and W.
I don't know, I've seen people try to read tape measures, you know. That's a maybe not the best way, but yeah, that works.
But, I mean, to put it into perspective, I think two years ago, when we had Northwestern Survey do just those corner markers, I think we, we spent over three grand to do that. And there's only like, what, six or eight corner markers put in?
Correct.
On each, on each section.
But now it is in-state statute that we're, when you have someone.
If you create a new cemetery.
Yep.
Not to have that marker when you bury them.
Yeah, one on each corner of each block, your site.
That's for, would you create new cemeteries?
Yeah, so if you're. Correct, your grandfathered in, you don't have to have one at every block. The exhibits or the monumentation would just be for, make it easier for somebody to measure off of a monument to mark on a grave and make it.
Right, and so that's why we tried to give you the examples, we just tried to give you a perspective, because this is grandfathered in, so you don't have to meet the statutory requirements. But we're just trying to show you, had you done a new cemetery, this would, what a cost would be, and then we gave you an alternate that had probably about half of the monuments, but, you know, there's still quite a bit of information that's out there, so then it's working with Mike to say, you know, what are your needs that you really have at the cemetery, can you even refine it back a little more to try to save some additional dollars?
I don't know what to think right now, really, to tell you the truth, I need to go over all this information for it. You know, I skimmed through it a bit. And all I see is that right now, my staff and myself have very little to do with the marking out at the cemetery. Bob Senior continued on with it after he retired from the city, he's done it, you know, when his son was in my position, Senior continued to do it, he still continues to do it. Everything that we're looking at doing with the cemetery is, you know, a lot like a lot of the other stuff we've been trying to update and bring along, we're looking at things, because I can get all this knowledge, I can go out there with Bob Senior, I can get this knowledge, and I can put it in my head, but then what are you gonna do when I do? You're gonna be back in the same boat. So with the way things are going, you know, this is no different than all the GIS stuff, I'm gonna push to have as much electronically done as possible for ease of everything going forward. Now, it's all gonna depend on how much we can afford, or what kind of stages we need to do this kind of stuff in, that's, that's just what it's gonna come down to, in my opinion. I will push this, just like GIS stuff, I mean, this ties in with the GIS, so. It's, it needs to be done, it's just a matter of how, when can we get it done. I mean, obviously, doing everything all at once, it's gonna be a little bit still considerably cheaper than that other front.
Yeah, but it was, yeah, there was a yearly commitment, but it was also looking at, you know, being able to streamline and cloud-based the way we record and sell and draft these as well. I mean, that, that paper trail is something this office can still do, but like Mike said and Tim said, having everything electronically GIS is, I think, is important in this day and age of not knowing where property lines order or anything else.
Especially some of the property lines need corrected over the last few years.
Just the, just the first step of having everything base mapped from Woodset is a step that I think we should consider taking at least in this year, and then consider the next steps in the future, because that's really what the cemetery's budget can really handle, anyway, it's some small stuff. And Mike's had some things on his wish list, the vault and some edification, some road improvements and those types of operation and maintenance that needs to happen so that the cemetery grounds itself can withstand and have sustainability. This will just help us be able to know where everything is in the future, that's on topic.
And I would say another goal with this too is, you know.
Is it something like when we put a marker in, is it something we could according to the price of the plot, when people are buying new ones, or?
Well, that's something I guess the city needs to consider, the, it's a side, I mean, your, your, your grave space that you sell is dictated by your operating and your maintenance, and it's only been raised once since I've been here in ten years, and prior to that, it was, I don't know how long it took before. I mean, an average cemetery space is a thousand dollars in most towns, and we charge two hundred and fifty dollars, which is hundred and fifty dollars more than it was when I started in two thousand and fourteen. And we don't, we don't charge much, and most people are surprised by that, but at some point, we're gonna have to consider raising those rates if we want to have some more sustainability to the property. So going hand in hand, I would recommend that we at least get the, the mapping portion, the first step that Tim and Caleb have put together done. So that it kind of goes in with the GIS hand in hand, and then work towards it, maybe a first and then a three-year, and then a five-year.
I think that's reasonable. I mean, to pick it in chunks. I think the, as far as the monuments, the vision, you know, the prices we have just for that section Y. And to duplicate that, the orange. I would start with a conservative approach to that, rather than going for the Cadillac.
Well, and, and, yeah, Ron, that's a good point, I guess, to put it into perspective that northern, those three northern sections, we've just started selling spaces in two years ago, and that's why we had it surveyed out and marked. The other sections to the west have nobody in them yet.
And we're not selling.
And we're not selling anything, no, one person totally, long time ago, get everything sold before you move into another section. We still have some spaces that I'm trying to mark off with Bob Senior that are unsellable. Not necessarily, no, Max, that's not the point. There have been some beautiful crabapple trees that have grown up, and the root systems do not allow for digging them up and putting a grave there, which is grave spaces planted there. Additionally, the original section of the cemetery next to the vault is the most smoked property on, in the cemetery, and when those, when that portion of cemetery was created, back then, people weren't put in vaults. So as you know, when it gets in the spring, there are a lot of very wet areas in that older section. So it's not conducive to having anyone laid to rest there. So those are some examples of why those spaces aren't being sold right now, is because they're just not going to work, or how people need to lay the rest nowadays. But I, I mean, since COVID, we sold a considerable amount of grave spaces, so they're, they, the other sections have really filled up. You know, with these, maybe not people make the rest, but definitely. So I, I mean, maybe in five years, we'll start moving into W, X, and Y more. But to my knowledge or something, like maybe I have some people that have a dozen spaces that have been sold up there. So we have some time.
Yeah, I, I feel a positive reaction to the proposal. I would be receptive to moving forward with the four sections that you suggested. Mainly because this is Woodset and your own quantity, but those are the Woodset's chairs. There is every bit versus the previous proposal you had, the playway was that Canadian company, I don't know what that was. The addresses of the people who issued the proposal were assumed to be on Long Island.
Basically an online company, but yeah, the, the CEO, I think, was in Toronto.
So I, no confidence in that, it's quite depressing, but if it's Woodset family, it's doable, I would do something.
Yeah, so by a head of nods, should I put this, that, the proposal in the federal packet to agree to the first section of services? Is there any, is there any re-revisement you need to do to this proposal, Tim? For them to just accept the first section of the services, the one for twenty-five hundred dollars, and then we'll move forward as we go? Or is it a package deal?
No, 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 it's a, we wrote that as alternate bid items on there for the serving, yeah, so no, we can leave the proposal the same. So are you thinking it's just the twenty-five hundred dollars to get the monuments located? Do you want the GIS component with that or not?
The GIS component is the seventy-nine hundred dollar one, right?
Correct, yeah.
I would say that would be later.
All the Excel converting and stuff.
Yeah. Mike thrown aside with me, that's my, I mean, that's, that's.
What's in the cemetery budget?
Not much, we're already moving perpetual care into our operating budget now.
So. Cemetery is one of those. Things that we have that doesn't even come close to paying for itself. But it's just how we know. And we're starting to understand that the quote-unquote budget at cemetery is a joke. It, it really is. Um, in the, you know.
Our perpetual care fund, that, you know, you can't be perpetual if it's not going up.
Yes, yes, agreed, the, the cemetery. Oh, you know. In the scheme of things and how everything works. The cemetery, I guess, doesn't benefit the current taxpayers, so to speak, you know what I mean? But it's, the city needs to be taking care of that more than it is. They, I don't understand how anyone can really think that that place can, can stand on its own and support itself, it just can't. It's, it's not a revenue-making place.
No, my mom and dad haven't moved.
Workforce out there is kinda lazy. So. But I mean, ultimately, it's, it's up to you guys on how you wanna proceed. I, I don't think Christina or myself are thinking that, you know, overnight, everything's gonna be. You know, up to par and great, you know, if we need to.
But move the area services separate from.
This is the thing.
It's a moving target too, it's just, you know, I mean, you gotta at least get one portion done before it can move on to the next.
What, Tim, what did you say then?
Yeah, we can do them separately, the only thing you have to keep in mind though, that the twenty-five hundred dollars, that's not going to include like a certificate of survey. That's just collecting the data to create the base map that we use in the GIS going forward. So, you know, you're not going to get a certificate of survey for twenty-five hundred dollars, but it's going to get us the information we need. To generate the base map that would be transferred into the GIS, so you can do them independently.
Twenty-five hundred is essentially the laser charge. Correct.
Right, that's what I'm like, baby steps.
When you get that and then before you see anything, you need to pay the seventy-nine hundred. I don't know, to me, those two things kinda go hand in hand.
Well, that seventy-nine hundred dollars this year. Or. As rates go up, I mean, or we kinda ask them to lock it in for.
Right, was this a five-year promise, Tim?
We do have to generally give our employees raises, so.
Well, you know, I mean, I, is it gonna get cheaper next year or the year after? If you're gonna go with that, you know, obtaining the information, you might as well pay the next part and get it put into GIS and you get it moving now.
Fund that council understands is gonna come out of the special care fund. Cause operating fund is not something we can budget this far.
No, maybe it should come out of a different fund. I mean, we need to, maybe we do need to take a serious look at what we're charging.
On top of that, yes.
On, you know. In addition to.
Right. So, if I can make a suggestion, put the whole proposal in the packet in February. You guys discuss it, chew on it in the next few weeks, figure out how you wanna proceed.
Yep, let's do it that way.
So you're saying the twenty-five hundred and seventy-nine hundred? Yeah, that's right, right, yeah.
It does work with your current GIS system that Mike already uses. Don't have to learn a new system.
I mean, if we have any problems, it's gonna be done right, it's gonna be done right by this. This is the proportion. Whatever parts we're not doing.
Could it be increased how about monuments or grandeur entirely now?
It's a good question. No, once you're gone, that like the government really.
I can, I can ask.
It'd be good, it would be good. What the worst they're gonna say is.
No, raise your rates. Raise your rates. Tim, you have the whole packet, right?
I do.
You have that last item of new business?
Let me pull that up here.
Probably wouldn't have heard you and Caleb chime in on this as well, but I can share my screen, I think.
I do have access to it, Christina, if you don't need to share your screen.
Okay, good.
I do, yeah.
Okay, good, I'll give Caleb a copy of it. So, uh. I'm fielding this operation manager. Little highway department and he dropped this packet off on Friday with Paige, um, got a copy out to Mike. We discussed it briefly, um. Little history, when they did reclaim on County State Highway Thirty. Um, they, they shifted the center line of, of Summit, a little bit further to the north. And then subsequently added the diagonal parking back in and the parallel parking back in, as you can see them right now. And since that has happened, there's been numerous complaints from business owners, travelers, pedestrians, everything. That, you know, it's obviously moved and there's not enough space, especially on the parallel side, to get out of your vehicle without. Hopefully not getting hit by a logging truck. Um, I know the business owners, a couple of them that I've forwarded, um, them to the county highway department for discussion. Because it's ultimately their road, a couple of the comments I got back after that construction was. Uh, we put it in, we put the center line in where, you know, the GIS said it was supposed to. I know that's not right, I know if we used to put further than what it used to be. But now they are gonna be doing a, um, a refout. A seal code in twenty-four. So they, because of the comments that gotten from a couple of business owners. They're, um, talking to the city about re, about changing the parking from diagonal on the south. Back to parallel. Um, so I sent this packet out to Deerwood, uh, Jan Chiropractic, the dental office. And Anderson Fabrics Outlet last Friday, just to see if anybody wanted to chime in about it. Um, I heard back from Jenna Moss, who's the chiropractor owner. Um, she, I, I sent that email to the board just tonight, they, obviously she's in favor of. Anything that will help the customers in front of her building. Um, Clark Catto, uh, did not feel as though, uh, changing anything was gonna affect the outlet. So she just wants to be aware of when the seal coating happens. And then obviously Scott and Ranger probably have the biggest input because of the dental office.
I spoke with them this afternoon. And they are not in favor of putting parallel parking down that side. And either is Sarah, or I didn't have a chance to talk to Rob. The insurance agency and Scott and Ranger and the dentist, they don't, they don't wanna see. If anything, they'd love to see the center line move, but keep the diagonal parking.
So I did extend tonight's meeting invitation to Ryan, he could not make it, that was a Congress.
Who's Ryan again?
Ryan is Operation Manager for the Highway Department for the Kentucky County. Um, I, I think he's fairly new, I think he replaced, um.
Month and a half.
I think he replaced the gentleman that just retired. Yeah, no. Yeah, um, this would be.
I don't, I never knew this.
Either way, um, I, I think it's important, if the city is not interested in moving back to parallel parking. To throw this back to Ryan and state that it's. The city's biggest observation is that the center line isn't right. I did not have an opportunity to do that before tonight. Um, especially knowing what you said with Scott and Rachel's feedback. But they won't obviously go forward without these being signed and authorized. And a resolution drafted by the city to change it back to parallel. So this is up for discussion. Now, to this parking space too, because we'll have to carry one.
A tremendous amount of parking for, for the businesses, yes, and I think we've, uh. Increased people's ability to shop. And decrease it, and I think also, you know, not that. You also have that apartment that'll be down there, that's like quite a few cars that are sitting there. Not supposed to be parked there, but they do end up there.
I have a clarification question, you said change it back to parallel, so the south side was parallel?
No, both sides were.
Oh, my, I'm so sorry, you're right. Diagonal, diagonal, diagonal.
From nineteen oh one through my entire childhood, both sides were diagonal, I don't know when, the north side went parallel.
Yeah, that was my mistake.
One of my returns, I noticed, I changed it, so. I remember a big problem with both diagonal. Parallel was okay because it does increase the driving lanes. Well, it should have increased the driving.
It should have, but it definitely didn't.
But it definitely didn't.
The westbound lane is narrow, especially with car parked there and then you get the winter time and. People park a foot out from the curb and, I mean, you said watch every truck coming from the east that comes through and not a single one of them can stay inside that line.
No, not at all.
They have to go over the line, otherwise they're gonna take mirrors off and peel them cars open like two hands.
Yeah, it used to be in the middle, there used to be a diagonal on both sides and the line was right halfway between.
After they seal coded it this last time, it's moving the line.
So on, uh, yeah.
So it says that you have concerns from local business and the change of local business.
I don't know what, what. Well, you look at the second, the second sentence is singular, there has been an A request to remove the diagonal part.
Well, I, I know that Mike's office and my office have both received feedback from the dental office regarding the handicap space. And, and that that was probably the biggest concern is that they have to utilize the alley access. To get to the sidewalk.
In my conversations with them, they weren't looking for parallel parking, they were looking for a curb cut. For the handicap access and I don't know if something got construed differently somewhere. Cause, I mean, of, of all the businesses on Main Street, I mean, let's be flat out honest about it. The dentist is the busiest one. And to take their parallel parking away, or their angular parking and put it with parallel. You know, you can only park a certain distance from this intersection, from a hide here and all that. You're gonna have three, maybe four spots over there, maybe, well, they've got six people at a time usually, so.
Send the DMV.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're gonna wind up with very, very little.
I wonder that would play for potential, um, buyer for that holding process. They do, but still, it's, it's terrible.
I mean, this side of the street is already limited. We get to do City Hall or.
Most of, most of my family run, would drive over a block, three blocks, if they didn't have the parallel park. There she is.
My oldest daughter passed the driving test, that's all she's ever, I never have to do this again.
Well, the feedback I'm hearing is that's the consensus is that the parallel and the diagonal, as it sits right now, is. What the community wants, but please.
Please move that line.
That where it should be.
I, I don't know for what it's worth, I've actually heard that the diagonal parking used to be on both sides. The same was right here.
And Main Street.
Yes, and I've heard plenty of people say they would actually like to see that come back.
Main Street was US seventy-one.
You know, if they wanna have a conversation, an honest conversation about this. If Ryan does, I'm more than happy, we'll, we'll sit right here while I have everybody come in and go, how do you want your parking?
Paul's phone number's on the letterhead, so if there's anybody, go ahead and give him a call.
Because to be honest with you. I, I don't have, you know, if our choice is leave it how it is, or move the line and make that parallel. Then leave it how it is. Now, this is a little surprising to me, with this weather, it's already drawn out. It's a, well, I'm never gonna actually, yeah, it's like, I'm sorry.
Well, one of the reasons it's already drafted too is because they have to get their bids and they have to get those out to people that are gonna do it all. And they have to turn it into US, to Mendat as well for a personal, so they have their buttons that they have to push to. I get it.
So if, if it's me and then it comes down to that, I don't, I don't.
Well, I can reach out to Ryan and give him your feedback and tell him.
That's pretty much kinda where we stood, you know, we got that on Friday and. Immediate thoughts were, well, let's invite business owners, let's hear from them and. I think we've all kinda done some legwork on that end of things and the overall consensus is leave it like this. Give us the center line back, or should we?
Main, the same one, is that center line, Main has enough room to get out and why, I think, I think Summit's the only part that has the biggest problem.
I think mainly. I feel like that one was possibly moved a little bit as well, but I think it just feels wider here. Doesn't seem like it, you know, this one, you really notice it when you're coming from the west. Then you see the line jog over like this for no apparent reason. You know, everybody notices that. Both sides of Maine and every semi you see on US seventy-one now, it used to come right fifteen feet wide. It seemed to work. There was a flashing light at this intersection with the cable every time, when we trucked it through, they took it down. Well, that's where, that's where we're at, I think, I think everybody agrees.
I'm sure Ryan knows our feedback.
Yeah, it's a spacing that's good on them.
You don't have that park many, but if they give up all of them next door, it's hard to do this.
Give them angular parking on both sides, that's what the city wants.
Give them angular parking on both sides, if that's what the city wants.
Some point, I don't know what the rationale was for moving to parallel, you know, no, no clue. Do we, do we know approximately when that happened?
I would, I would assume being that they're asking us, you know, the city's opinion, if it's something that people seriously want, I'm sure they would entertain that as well.
Diagonal parking on both sides.
Right.
What, sixty feet from curb face to curb face?
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Did you look at the whole pictures, because of course those were model two, so they.
Right.
Well, I mean, even in the eighties. Those were some boats.
Yeah.
You know, so it's, it's one of those things, or, yeah, can you do it?
Yeah.
People could, you know, do that weird thing, you know, pay attention.
And you also have the, the stop sign at the intersection, so it's not like, yeah, they don't follow it, but you shouldn't be doing seventy. By the time you get to the main area. That's, they are to a lot of people at this intersection. You know, from my standpoint, from public works and the public safety of everything, it's, you know, we don't really have a whole lot of skin in this game, it's not our role, it's county's role. Or we owe it to our business owners in our town to listen and kinda help them out with it. I think we just have to follow what the majority of them are wanting from us. I don't think we can do any better way than that.
Like I said, that's our choice. Inside diagonal the other.
Please move mine.
Sounds good.
Not that anybody follows the sign.
It's kind of, it's kind of a bias.
There.
Keep it on the inside of your driver's.
Well, you know, if you're, if you're over it a bunch of times, it gives them a good reason to pull you over, I guess, so.
So it's not passing on the other side?
And what that's got it, okay.
Way back then.
No, usually people are driving in the pardon lane. Alright, uh, way back when, there was no stop sign on Main, uh, seventy-one, so you only stopped on Summit. So that was, there was a flashing yellow light, we're going straight through, flashing red. Uh, anything else?
Not unless you guys have something.
All favor. Stand it in.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thanks, so, you too.
What's up? No, I would, I would guess they're gonna chip some in, they're gonna get me in some of that safe time.